Yeah. So they can't.
Exactly.
I think about. They. He's been. Running, running back. So I mean. You're present. Yeah.
So we don't get it.
For us. Yep. Yep. That's. Oh, wait. For that. So it's. Those. I don't know. Most of them. That's. Yeah. We're random. That's.
That's on. True. True. Yeah. There's. Yeah. There's. Right. Yeah. Now, right. Somebody. You're like. You're like. Okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah. 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 When you're. So. And we do. It's. Tonight.
Yeah. What if she fit you and she was like.
But I'm like. I.
If she did something bad, let you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number.
No, thank you. I think they. It's.
Over. Twenty eight. Okay. Yeah. I think about one second. I'll. Into. Yeah. And. Yeah. There. Actually, we really. And then. Of course.
Right. Like. Yeah. Sure. My. Your. Right. And.
Oh. Okay. I think. Actually. Yeah. And. It's.
You'll think. I need to remind you. But. If you were. The first. On. She. Would. Have. A lot. Of. This. Right. You have. To. Be. Yes. We. He. Was. The guy. On. Today. About. You know. Something. You. We. He. Yeah. He got. Now. And. He has. The. Just. That. Just. Um. So. We have. This. Hasn't. happened. Because. He was. Going. To. Down. Yes. And. We were. Like. It's nice. And. With. The. Drive. Right. Just. And then. Okay. You're. Talking. Yeah. Yeah. Definitely. It was. The. You're. Sure. You're. Not. That. If. Can't. Be. Very. Very. They. They're. Not. And. They're. 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 Some. Something. Something. That. They're. Yeah. It's. They're. 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 So. Like. They. They're. Me. That's. The. Problem. I think. That. We're. True. Are. You're. Saying. But really. Like. Impossible. Yeah. Exactly. Because. They're. They're. Coffee. But. They're. Out. And they're. Doing. Really. Little. Out. Of. How. It's. So. Yeah. Um. She. They're. People. They're. Possibly. Possible. They're. Probably. They're. 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 Probably. They're. 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 Yeah. Because. They're. 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 Yeah. I didn't. Mention. It. I'm. Pretty. Sure. Because. I'm. Probably. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. I'm. Ready. Yeah. And. I think. That. That's. Really. Yeah. Yeah. Like. A lot. Like. You know. We don't. Have. Any. Names. Or. Something. Like. And then. I have. A. Friend. I'm. Always. As. Long. As. I'm. Yeah. 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 Absolutely. Absolutely. But. They. They. My. Family. Is. It's. That's. The. Brand. That. I've. 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 Actually. Close. I think. It. And. I. I. I did. Uh. I did. Uh. We. Had. Some. Seasons. I made. It. Right. And. I'm. I'm. Tell. You. Right. Here. Yeah. It's. 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 Prove. It's. Yeah. It's. It's. Always. Pretty. Important. So. We. Think. It's. One. Point. Of. Uh. You know. In. Part. They. Come. And. Okay. I don't. Want. To. And. Basically. In. Brand. And. I. 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 Yeah. I don't. Really. Have. A. Day. Okay. It's. Like. These. Yeah. I don't. Know. I would. Actually. Have. I'm. I'm. Very. Good. Yeah. And. It's. That's. Really. Yeah. 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 It's. One. Spirit. Is. Kind. Of. Me. Yeah. Which. Now. Yes. So. Much. Right. It's. I'll. Give. I'll. Have. Like. Like. You. Can. Make. Sure. I'm. Sure. I'm. Yeah. I'm. Dreaming. That. Dream. That's. Like. Well. Yeah. Like. I'm. About. It. So. Yeah. I have. To. Read. Here. Yeah. Yes. I've. Been. Thought. Of. It. Yeah. I'm. 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 Thank. You. 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 Good. Evening. It is six o'clock on December first. Wow. Twenty twenty five. And I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody Council meeting to order unless there's an objection. Seeing none. This meeting is called to order. Councilwoman Harris is going to be joining us virtually, but it does not look like she has done so yet. Um. With that, Councilman Price, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Ashley Price. At this meeting, help us to make decisions, keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliver. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, infinite, and evergreen.
Thank you.
Eve.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um. Uh. These are always great. Uh. Moments. Uh. In the Police Department, we'd like to recognize our employees for their exceptional work. Uh. At this time, I would like to recognize our employee of the quarter. Um. If. Uh. Police Service Representative Lindora Anderson, if you could please come up. I like that she already got a clap and they don't even know what she's done yet, so. So, uh. Lindora's been with us for a while now, so third quarter. Uh. PSR Lindora Anderson is a dedicated, dependable member, member of our team and brings a positive attitude uh. To everything she does. She consistently goes above and beyond to get the job done right and takes pride in her work, completing it with care and attention to detail. Her warmth and professionalism shine through in every interaction, whether she's helping a coworker, answering questions, or keeping things running smoothly behind the scenes. She's always willing to lend a hand where she can and consistently approaches her work with a positive attitude. PSR Anderson's hard work, great attitude, and commitment highlights her value to our department. She works night shifts, so she's kind of the unsung hero um of handling uh the, the amount of work that comes in uh throughout the night, and uh she does a fantastic job. And I, I received nothing but um comments, compliments uh about you. And I thank you uh for doing the work that you do each and every day. And um I would like to congratulate you as our employee of the quarter for third quarter twenty twenty five. And at this time, um, I would like the Dunwoody Police Foundation to come up. We have a gift card for you. Uh. And at this time, our uh officer of the third quarter is Officer Catherine Thielman, if you'll come up to the podium. Uh. Officer Thielman, um, she has uh been with us for several months now and uh came to us from Athens Clark County and has done a fantastic job since she's been here. During the third quarter, Officer Thielman's dedication, investigative skills, and thoroughness led to the successful resolution of a case involving multiple suspects in fraudulent banking activities. Officer Thielman was assigned a fraud case where two male suspects had cashed fraudulent checks at Renaissance Bank. Officer Thielman quickly gathered crucial information and successfully identified both suspects through careful analysis of photo ID and video surveillance footage. Demonstrating initiative beyond typical patrol duties, she utilized uh the TLO database to obtain current addresses and phone numbers for the suspects, providing essential information for their apprehension. Throughout the investigation, Officer Thielman took the proactive steps of drafting and sending a formal, what we call a three sixty letter to Renaissance Bank. She actually brought that with her from Athens Clark County, which was a great uh, I'm kind of going on a side note here. Um. A great way for us to obtain information without having to get a subpoena, which is completely lawful. So saves a lot of time for investigators and officers. But she did that by requesting additional evidence, including camera footage and images of fraudulent checks. Her comprehensive approach to evidence collection ensured that all necessary materials were gathered to build a strong prosecution case. This thorough investigative work paid off on September sixteenth, twenty twenty five, when signed warrants were successfully obtained for both suspects. Officer Thielman's diligent approach resulted in multiple felony charges for each suspect, including forgery in the third degree, identity fraud, and theft by deception. Her work on this investigation bought us the highest standards of policing and demonstrates the investigative skills that go well beyond what is expected of patrol officers. And when the patrol officers do go that extra mile, it does. It takes a lot of work off those investigators because the investigators are assigned a lot of cases. Fraud is one of our number one assigned cases, and they're the hardest to work. So I want to commend Officer uh Catherine Thielman um for your diligence, for going beyond uh, above and beyond what your normal duties require of you. Uh. Fantastic job. That's why she's uh Officer of the Third Quarter twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations to all the members, the fine members of our police department that are here. We are incredibly grateful for your service. Um. What a great tale of investigative police work um and getting the people that, the bad guys. And so, as always, we are grateful that you chose Dunwoody to be your professional home. And uh, let us know if there's anything we can do for y'all. Okay. Public comments. I have two cards. If you want to speak during public comment session, the cards are on the music stand in the back. And um, uh, Bob Dallas, if you'll approach the microphone, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the City Council. My name is Bob Dallas. I'm here to talk about three different things. Two people, two roads, and two malls. First, the two people, you may recall their names, Joyce Armacher and Len Bird. In many respects, they're kind of like the founding people of Dunwoody. Well before we became a city, they were involved, for example, Ashford Dunwoody Road. It's a parkway. It's a parkway because of people like them, working with the DHA and many others, made the perimeter area so much different than anywhere else in metro Atlanta. And we have to respect folks like them who took that initiative. Two roads. I ask you to compare Ashford Dunwoody Road to Roswell Road from two eighty five to Mount Vernon. You all have driven him, as I have many times. Look at Ashford Dunwoody Road. It's a good-looking, well-working road that attracts Class A clients, restaurants, tenants across the board. Compare that to Roswell Road. Lot more strip center look, out parcels, and a whole lot of drive-throughs. And that has an impact on how effective those roads not only work, how safe they are, but how valuable they are to the community. And I will tell you this, Sandy Springs is spending millions to redo it to make it look like Ashford Dunwoody. Two malls. Look at Perimeter Mall and compare it to Quiddit Place Mall, the newer mall. Perimeter Mall has stood the test of time, attracting Class A clients, tenants across the board, and continues to be a growing, great uh area because of the fact that we have maintained, working with the City Council, the Commission, Deca County Commission before the city was formed, the DHA, and many other people to maintain the character of this character area. It has taken a lot of work. The kinds of things that we have allowed and have opposed have resulted in what we see here today, which is just great for all the people of Dunwoody. Now, I know that there's an effort to put in a lot of drive-throughs. Of course there is. You look at the economics of any drive-through, it really adds a lot to the value of that. However, it takes away. It comes at a cost to everything else. And I give to you, Quiddit Place Mall and Roswell Road as exhibits A and B for that. And then, you know, you, you look at what we have worked so hard on, and that is, you all are familiar with it. You know, our land use, the programs that we have put together, working with the citizens to make it what it is today. And I would just ask that when we consider any kind of use that incorporates a drive-through, that we respect the fact that we worked hard to make it what it is today. And I'll close with this. If we build for more cars, we're going to get more cars. It's, it's really that simple. If we build for people walking around, we will get more people. Everything that we've worked for, for so many years, has been to attract people, and we've seen the businesses take advantage of that to all of our benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Brown, approach the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes. Uh. The public hearing, okay. So that's the end of comment cards, um, unless someone has one. Um. And we will have another public, we'll have a public hearing uh for rezoning in a moment. And then we will also have another comment section at the end of the meeting. All right, Sharon, whenever you're ready.
In order to allow a drive-through restaurant at lot parcel number eighteen, three forty nine, zero five, zero, zero, two, in consideration of a special land use permit, case SLUP twenty five dash oh two, located at one twenty five perimeter center west, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh three, three, eight.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um. I believe you're slightly familiar with this request. It had come here a couple of months ago, but then there were some changes to the architecture of the building that sent them back to Planning Commission, so they've gone through all of that process. And now they are back again, but this is for a special land use permit for a drive-through um at the Ashford Lane Shopping Center. As a refresher, this is an aerial view of the shopping center overall. Uh. This is uh along the edge of the shopping center, uh along perimeter center west. You can see from the map here that the newly developed Ashford Lane Green is uh across the parking lot, further back on the property. Um. So that's the context. This is right next to where the Chipotle and the Sweet Green are. This would redevelop that old bank that's been abandoned for a while. Uh. Overall, the site has eight hundred and fifty five parking spaces total. They do a shared parking model um on this property, and four hundred and sixty uh of the spaces are decked. Um. Again, this is further background on the site. It's the abandoned bank building. This is, oh, an overview of rec, was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and then what was submitted to the council back in August. Again, this is what bumped them back to the Planning Commission. And then, in October, when they went back to the Planning Commission, they had revised the architecture once again to really essentially match uh what was submitted um for approval to the Planning Commission back in July. So we're sort of right back um to the start. Uh. Overall, um, the building has only changed slightly in the dimensions. The applicant did revise the site plan, and this is due to some underground stormwater uh difficulties uh with a pipe there. Um. So they've uh sort of squashed the building slightly um to accommodate for that, but the design and the aesthetics um are uh very similar, and the operation of the drive-through remains the same. They are proposing a double drive-through to the rear of the property with an eighteen-car uh stacking capacity with four parking spaces and a heated outdoor patio. Uh. The drive-through lanes are completely to the rear of the building. They're hidden from view of perimeter center west. Um. Between the building and perimeter center west is a bit of green space and that outdoor patio. And they've also improved the pedestrian access from perimeter center west into the site. This is the proposed rendering for reference. Uh. This, the, a photo on the left shows what the view would be like from perimeter center west as you go into the entrance to the Ashford Lane development. And then the rendering on the right shows uh the drive-through operation at the rear of the building. Overall, Planning Commission is recommending approval of this general um layout, subject to the site plan and the elevations that were provided. Uh.
For the site, we are not buying, we are leasing. And the landlord in fact has representatives here this evening who you may or may not know, but will give you an opportunity to ask questions as well. And Zaxby's decided that this was the perfect location. As you can tell from the renderings, this is not your typical Zaxby's. This is a very upscale store. So we started out with the proposition of going to the DHA. My roots here are very, very deep and I remember Joyce and everyone else that was instrumental in terms of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. So my first stop was there. I think at least one council person was there that evening. And we went to the DHA and made our presentation and the DHA, I am delighted to say, in general, supported the application, but had a couple of concerns. One of the concerns, as everyone does, is traffic. And that's perfectly understandable in the Dunwoody area. And then the second concern was making sure that we had adequate parking for the site, and I'll explain how we have done that next. And then the third concern was to make sure that there was connectivity from the entrance, the main entrance to this portion of the Summit Development, not Summit Development, excuse me, the Semler Development, all the way over to the stores that are to the east of this site, which did not exist. So we acquiesced in their request and immediately engaged the services of a transportation engineer to analyze the site. Now, keep in mind, the original building on this site was four thousand square feet and it was configured, as Madeline pointed out, slightly differently. It always retained the feature of having the outdoor dining, but that has actually been expanded at this point in time. And the size of the building has been minimized to three thousand square feet, which gives us more room on site to do things with green space and outdoor dining and bike racks and that kind of thing. So the application changed as a consequence during this process. But we did the traffic engineer. We had committed to extending the sidewalk across perimeter center place. And we also agreed that we would make sure that there was evidence in the record of proof of adequate parking. I zoned Semler back in two thousand and three, which just kind of boggles my mind. And at that time, it was hailed as a brand new concept in mixed use zoning. It was near and dear at that point to DeKalb's heart, but also always has been to Dunwoody because this mall has been a jewel of the community. I agree with Bob in that respect. And so we brought in this, this large mixed use project, development of regional impact, everything else. And it was approved in two thousand and three, but not built as Madeline pointed out until two thousand and six. The way that the topography of the site is situated is that if you, once you hit McDonald's on perimeter center west, there's a, generally speaking, a rise in the property. So that if you're on perimeter center west, you're actually looking uphill to many of the buildings, like the old Bank South facility that was over there, may still be. But at this particular location, the grade drops and therefore one of the, we were better able to serve what I think was one of the major concerns with regard to the Semler zoning. And that was that we wanted to make sure that what was visible from perimeter center west still enhanced pedestrian connections was still attractive, was not the rear of buildings. And in fact, instead would mimic a double entrance, if you will, so that it looked like the project was pulled up as close to the street as it could be. But none of those projects that were on that side gave the opportunity that this site did in terms of providing the additional green space. So that was one of the topical graphical issues that we addressed. In terms of parking, when we zoned this property, the concept was that there would be parking in central locations, that you would have a parking deck, which has four hundred and some odd spaces in it. And that other than that, there would be scattered throughout the community, a number of parking lots that could be used for all of the businesses. They did not want to particularly encumber the individual business uses with particularly front parking, because it would perhaps again, not be attractive in terms of an enhancement of a pedestrian connection. And, and so always it has been contemplated that there will be parking that is shared throughout this development and directly across the street from the Zaxby's. And we do, we did produce to the staff, the easements which established this, this is a very large lot that is not used a whole lot and which would be more than adequate in order to serve whatever the parking needs might be of this particular site. I would point out, this is an interesting statistic that I actually think my client came up with. I wasn't aware of it. In the Manhattan project on site, there are nine hundred and ninety-five residents. Within point two five miles of this site, there are three thousand one hundred and fifty residents, believe it or not, between all the developments that have evolved. So if you have a site that engages perimeter center west and is obviously an attractive site and has the ability to have bicycle connections and pedestrian connections truly within the entirety of the mall community, that seems to me to be a big benefit that we are providing with this particular community. We did the traffic study. The traffic study indicated that we would not have any of the problems in terms of access from perimeter center west that a number of you announced concerns about from an initial standpoint. We've got plenty of stacking on site. And now that the building has been reduced by a quarter of its size, that impact is even less. So we feel very comfortable in saying to you that the impact of this site should be relatively insignificant. So why then, as Mr. Dallas has already told me, I shouldn't have drive-throughs? Should we allow a drive-through on this location? And the answer to that is somewhat simple. There's a drive-through there now. Your code does not distinguish between banks and fast food or any other kind of drive-through, liquor stores even, I don't believe. You still have to have a special use permit. When we zoned this property, that requirement was not, obviously, well, Dunwoody wasn't in existence, so it wasn't in Dunwoody's code. And there was no requirement imposed upon the project by DeKalb County and its approval that in any way restricted these uses. So the bank was always intended to be there and always was intended to have a drive-through. We are replacing that drive-through with another drive-through. And admittedly, it is a different use, but it is still a net non-difference in terms of the number of drive-throughs that are on this site. After we established those facts, we went back to the Dunwoody Homeowners Association and shared our studies and reports with them. I believe Tim Brown is here tonight to discuss the DHA's position on this application, which has been favorable throughout this process. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the project. Design is key, I think, to any, it's also integral to land use planning. For years, I don't know if you all remember this, you had a picture of that McDonald's on the corner on your copy of your land use plan, whether you liked the McDonald's there or not. It, at the time, and I zoned that too, was a flagship model for McDonald's. And you all approved it as a flagship model for McDonald's, but we were expected to make major modifications to the site, not the least of which was swinging the drive-through so that it could be invisible to the fullest extent possible on the site. The signage, the type of architecture, all of that was completely different from McDonald's at the time. And that made it a satisfactory use insofar as you are concerned. If you all intended to ban drive-throughs, that would be in your code. It's not. You do expressly allow them, pursue it to a special land use permit. And at this point, we have the staff recommendation saying that it is appropriate at this location. We have two votes out of the planning commission saying it is appropriate at this location. And we are asking for your vote in favor at the same time. This is probably my last zoning hearing, which kind of breaks my heart. But it is appropriate, in my view, that it is here in Dunwoody. I started out representing the Dunwoody Homeowners Association when I became a zoning lawyer and since turned to the dark side. Although my roots were such that I was always inclined to work with neighborhood organizations and have continued to do so. So I would ask that you indulge me and actually go ahead and approve this, notwithstanding the drive-through component of it. It's not a bad use, folks. It's a good use at this location. It will fill in a vacancy. We do want to keep the mall alive and vibrant. And I can't think of a greater group of people to make my last appearance in front of. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, unless there's an objection, I close the public hearing. Oh, open the public hearing. Sorry, thank you. Yeah, open the public hearing. It's right here. All right, open the public hearing. And we will start with those opposed. Okay. All right, yep, those in favor would like to speak. We'll have ten minutes. Is the clock going to count down for ten? Yes, okay. You'll just introduce yourself slowly so Sharon can catch your names.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Cameron Long. I am a senior project manager for CTO Realty Growth, which is the property owner and landlord of Ashford Lane. Also accompanied tonight by Autry Graham. She is our director of marketing. And we're here to express our support, of course, for the Zaxby's development on our property. Want to say that we have been thoroughly involved in the process with the Zaxby's team at every stage up until this point to ensure that everything that they've proposed before you meets our high standards of Ashford Lane. Autry and I both office in Ashford Lane. So it's kind of our home away from home. We love the property. Of course, we want what's, what's best for the property and we think this unique flagship model, Zaxby's, is proposing, proposing, excuse me, would be a great addition to, to the property and to Dunwoody. And of course, happy to answer any questions or concerns that the proposed development might bring to our property, whether it's through operations or otherwise. So thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak for this application? If you'll just approach the microphone, you'll have whatever time is left on the clock. And if anyone else would like to speak for it, you are welcome to line up. Just so the speaker knows that there are other people waiting. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Tim Brown, forty-five oh nine Kingsgate Drive. I'm here as president of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. Way back when, a long time ago, Kathy came and made the presentation to the DHA at, at one of our board meetings. What I remember about that meeting is at the end, when we opened up Q and A, it was maybe one of our more engaged audiences that night. We asked really good questions about parking. We asked really good questions about the drive-through, about stacking, about the movement of cars through the drive-through. We asked about parking. We asked about cross easements, reciprocal access. You can call it what you want to, but they all do about the same thing, which, you know, allows for multiple users to, to access the conveniences of the property. And I think at the end of that meeting, the one thing that I remember was that anyone who was at that meeting probably got a lot out of it because there weren't any speeches. There was really good, solid Q and A between the audience and the applicant. And I hope Kathy and her team walked away thinking, wow, we had a really engaged audience tonight. So I think it was a win-win in a lot of respects with how that meeting was conducted. At the end of that meeting, the DHA board went into session and voted to support the application, which would include the special land use permit for the drive-through. On a personal note, Kathy and the Zaxby team has kept us, kept me informed as to the changes that have been made in the plan throughout. There weren't any changes as architecture reverted back almost to the original format as improvements were made in stacking and the performance of the drive-through. I didn't see anything as president of the DHA that would require them to come back before us or for the board to have to entertain the motion again. So from that perspective, the original support stood and, and still stands. I will say that a well-executed order of crinkle-cut fries from Jack Zaxby's is among the best in the business. And I shouldn't have to drive to Chambly to get crinkle-cut fries from Zaxby's anymore. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak for? Seeing none, I would ask anyone who would like to speak against this application to come forward. Just line up in the middle so speakers know there's other people waiting. Is the clock ready? Okay, go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Yes, hello, my name is Zachary Humphreys. I, I grew up here, longtime resident. I am certainly not opposed to Zaxby's in, in South Dunwoody. The only thing is, is that I would oppose it. I would oppose the special permit. I think that there has been a lot of planning, I think especially in terms of South Dunwoody, to make it a more walkable, make it a more environmentally friendly space. And I believe that as, I, I don't know your name, but I'm sorry. Bob, as Bob said over here, if you build infrastructures for cars, it's going to come. There is a lot of people around that area and I think that there are a lot of other options available for us to explore how to bring those people in, into, into that Zaxby's. I think that especially during these times too, we, you know, we're, we're kind of a lot more isolated. We're a little bit alone. What's wrong with people parking their cars, going into a restaurant and chit-chatting and getting to know their neighbor? I think that that's such an important thing for a community. So I come in here in support of Zaxby's in our community, but maybe not with a double-decker drive-through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Bob Dallas and Zaxby's, Chick-fil-A, Raising Cane, pick any restaurant. I don't think anybody is arguing with that. That's not the issue. The bigger issue is what's perimeter mall going to look like in the future? And what we do today will affect that in a big way. And I will say for the record, I'm sorry Kathy, that you will not be continuing to practice because we have many years together. As you may know, I served on the DeKalb County Planning Commission for about twelve and a half years and about eight years on the planning commission here for the city of Dunwoody. And I think of her as one of the best zoning attorneys out there. And her relationship that I've had has always been of honesty and understanding for the better of the things that we're trying to achieve. But to clarify, one thing that was brought up is a bank had a drive-through. I will submit to you that the traffic with a bank drive-through is substantially different than a restaurant with a drive-through. The number's far, I'll see, exceed the bank, the restaurant far exceeds the bank. But I have to be clear on this, that bank has lost its right to a drive-through. It's been more than six months since it hadn't been used. So that's why we have to come through the SLUP process. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison to say, oh, this is just another drive-through. Either in terms of the kind of use or the fact it really does not have the rights for a drive-through. But I want to point this out about drive-throughs in perimeter, that's really important. We already know that this one, two others are on the horizon. There will be more if we continue to allow these. Just look at the property where the target shopping center is located. I could point to some very good spots where a drive-through would be appropriate. Look where the Twisted Taco is. That is zoned especially for a restaurant. Great drive-through spot. Go across the street where the Total Wine is. Not that anybody here has ever gone there, but the fact of the matter is, perfect spot for a drive-through. Look at Lazy Dogs, the undeveloped spot, perfect spot for a drive-through. They're probably close to a dozen spots throughout the Dunwoody side of perimeter that would facilitate a drive-through and the market will accept it. So that's what we're asking ourselves here is not the use of a restaurant. I think that's great. Have a variety of restaurants. The more the merrier. As long as the market can accept it, fantastic. But how it's being used ultimately matters. And that's what we talk about when we talk about, you know, form zoning. In other words, how it's being used is really critical in terms of whether or not it's going to be successful in the long run. And I submit to you that adding more drive-throughs in perimeter mall will really make us look more like the peers that are trying to look like us today. And I don't think that's a good thing for the city of Dunwoody. And I close with this. I too serve on the Dunwoody Homeowners Association with Mr. Brown, our president. And, you know, appreciate his and others' perspective. But I think this is a perspective that all of us in all of Dunwoody, and frankly, all of our neighbors who like to visit us want to consider. And I close with just this one observation. When we look at Dunwoody and compare ourselves to the neighbors, look at how they use their properties, how they, all parcels are. We don't have that. We don't have a car dealership, right? We don't have a movie theater. Does that mean we should have one? Our neighbors do and they do a pretty good job with it, but there's certain kinds of uses that, right? How it's being done will affect how we engage the place. And you may recall during the late spring, this picture of opening up a new multi-use path in front of perimeter mall. That whole program is going to come to fruition one day with the help of PCIDs as well as the cities around us. We will have a great, robust multi-use path system here in perimeter, as it should be. And as a gentleman who spoke before me, who lives near here, that's exactly what they want, to connect people together. So I will close with this again. If you build for cars, you will get more cars. If you build for people, you'll have more people. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this application? I see none. So with that, I close the public hearing. And it's time for council questions or comments. Anybody want to start? Catherine?
Hi, I want to ask about the parking because you have four parking spots for a restaurant. If you go southeast of that, to that little brown bag seafood and Sweet Green, it gets full. You can't park there in the lunchtime. I'd have to park across the street. Is that what your plan is for extra parking?
Yes.
Yeah.
It is. And we also, and I forgot to mention this, we committed to a raised crosswalk to facilitate the use of our space by those parkers. People are not parking in that lot. I don't know why. But as I said, the original scheme for the zoning of this entire plan was to have common parking and not necessarily associated with the use itself.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
I'll take you up. I'll just kind of pick up a little bit with what Catherine said because I had the same concern. I've been there for lunch a lot. And it's, it's a congested mess with cars. There's no place to park. The area gets packed. I read your queuing study. What my concern is, is that people don't have more, people do not have a place to park. They're going to, that's just going to have more traffic in the drive-through. What, is there a plan in place if the queuing goes out into that main drive part of the parking lot to manage that? Because that would just bog down that whole area.
Assuming your assumption is correct and that that's what would happen, I'm unaware of a plan to be able to put more in front. I suppose that we could and we could come back at that point in time and ask if it's appropriate to change the site plan to do that. And obviously, if we can't get people into our stores, in our interest to make sure that we can and to do it on a timely basis. I don't know about you, but I don't go to Chick-fil-A at noon. I don't want to sit in that queue either. So I think you've got to put customer preference into that a little bit, but I assure you that we would look at it if for no other reason than our own business use.
Okay, another, another question, just presuming this is successful and goes through. I do have a question on the site plan. The, it looks like it's a one-way in, one-way out on the, not only the drive-through, but the, the parking lot itself. And that the, the exit is a right turn only, but it looks like that's only the right turn only appears to be just with signage or paint or something. There doesn't appear to be a forced right turn only because we all know you can have a sign there. Drivers are not always going to, and the fact that there's a driveway coming into the parking lot there as well as a crosswalk right there. I think there's a really dangerous situation of people turning left. Is there any consideration for bulbing out that curb to make it a forced right turn?
We can not only bulb it out, but you may want some low-lying plants on it because with a bulb out alone, people will often drive over. So if you would like us to make that commitment, I'm sure that we can.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that as, you know, a change to the site plan because if, if, I, I just want, I don't want the opportunity for people to turn left there. And while
Can we do that verbally in terms of, not verbally, but written condition of zoning that?
Yeah, I'm sure we could do that, Richard or.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, and it, just another question. I'm glad to see that a crosswalk was included in that spot. However, the crosswalk just kind of dead ends into a landscaping island.
On which side?
On, on the parking lot side, on the, I'm trying to, the, the top side of the site plan, I think, I think that's probably the eastern side. But so if you're leaving the Zaxby's and taking, walking into the crosswalk to go to the parking lot because you parked over there or going to the Manhattan or wherever else on the other side. It, the crosswalk just doesn't take you anywhere. It takes you to a landscape island.
That would be really silly.
It's, it's a very busy section, especially during lunchtime or dinnertime when that would be most utilized. So this might be more for the property owners or property management. If, again, assuming, presuming success of the application, could we do something to make sure that, and again, Richard, I'd like to have that somehow worked in, that that crosswalk actually gets pedestrians to someplace safe and not just into the middle of a crowded intersection because that's what it looks like to me right now. It would, it would do.
I think that's reasonable too.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have right now.
John?
Thank you. I think my first question is for Madeline. If I may. Madeline, I've been, we have a couple of rezonings and SLUPs applications. This property, is there any adjoining land uses or land property owners that have concerns regarding this project?
So this is all one property essentially. So the impacts of this development are only impacting the property owner who's, who's here this evening.
Right.
I haven't heard from any, any property is a little bit further away and I have not had any comments from.
I get it. But one of the things that we need to look at is adjoining property uses. And if there's any complaints or any issues that they have raised this one, then there's no issues, no adjoining complaints or issues regarding this land use or this SLUP.
So there is the public comment and there are comments in both opposition and I believe support in that package, but that's all I've received. And I believe a lot, majority of those public comments are residents, not necessarily, necessarily other commercial business, if that's what you're.
Correct. I'm just, again, looking at the how I'm allowed to, you know, approve or deny. I'm looking at making sure that I'm doing my due diligence. There is no real adjoining land use issues that we have in front of us tonight compared to other ones where there might be.
Correct.
Okay. I guess this is done for the applicant. The, I saw on there about the outdoor seating and the heating. And I'm also seeing, I was trying to look at the, the drawings. It's not covered. Just explain to me the outdoor seating and what you envision. I see grass. Is it real grass? So just tell me what's happening with the outdoor seating and the amenities that are being part of that.
It is, it is real grass. It is accessible from the side of the facade that actually faces perimeter center west. The idea in terms of the actual heating element was that in a day like today where it's not particularly warm, but people still might be willing to sit outside if there was a heating element could be provided. I don't think that we have roofs contemplated on this. Again, if that's something.
Again, I was just looking at the drawing. I'm trying to understand. You're heating, but, you're heating, but what are you heating and how long is?
You know, think of an open patio, which you often have those tall heating units sitting at the table and they actually work. Whether that means you want to sit out there or not, it's another matter.
So I guess it's more of a pergola style roofing and just depending on which way the sun is, it may or may not be very, okay.
That's fair.
And then are there any conditions that have been raised in the application that the developer is, are you in favor of all the applications?
Yes.
And the full packet as it stands today?
I'm happy to add the two that have been discussed this evening.
I'm happy to hear that. I just wanted to make sure that there were no concerns on what's in the packet in front of you today.
No, sir.
Including the heating and all the other things in the crosswalk and all the designs and the layout. I have no further questions. I appreciate it. Thank you so very much and it's been a pleasure, Derek.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thanks. We talk about human-based development and I support the human-based and I support designing places for people. We understand that the fossil fuel emissions, CO2 particulate matters are going to be spewed as vehicles are queued in that parking. I, I eat right next door there and I go inside and I sit and I enjoy the seated places and those businesses adjacent, those fast casuals. Their business model doesn't require a drive-through and I, I support those businesses. I would ask the applicant if you would be open to a no idling enforcement, say it's thirty seconds or less, a vehicle in queue has to stop their emission and turn off their vehicle.
That's something I haven't even thought about, but it's an interesting question. The only thing that concerns me about this, and I'm The only thing that concerns me about this, and I'm trying to be as honest with you as I possibly can, is I don't, I don't know how you enforce it. You know, you have people in line who are trying to get to their lunch as quickly as possible. I don't think they want to be in that queue any longer than you want them to be in that queue. But if they don't turn off their engine, who is, who is responsible for that? That's, that's my question.
That's for me to solve?
There, there's, that can be attainable through research on how that can be achieved.
Okay, well, I do have someone here from Zaxby's operations and.
Put that out there. I lived in Europe for six years and they were doing it 20 years ago.
If they can do it here, they can do it in Unwitty.
Regardless. And I do, I'm looking at the applicant here. We do have the adjacent neighbors that live in the, the Manhattan and I, I go there for lunch all the time. So they, there, there are no, there's no spaces, even in that shared area. It's very, very full. And right now, today, the folks that are sitting in the abandoned, the empty bank space are folks that are just, the drivers, the fast food delivery people, the people that are doing the, the to-go thing. So it really is a full area at lunchtime and I find it very, very unfriendly if you're not in a car to try to walk around there. So this, this family, Angeline and Philip Box sent an email back on April 17th. They live in the Manhattan building, unit 2201. And they just, very few parking spaces available, overflow. They're worried about traffic mandarin, looking around for parking spots. They're, they're really concerned about the impact on, on driving and the increased cars and the lack of parking. That's what their concerns are there. And they're, they're closed with this type of restaurant would downgrade the image of the immediate area for select quality restaurants. That, that was their comment. I just want to, you know, bottom line upfront for me is that it's, I believe it will add to congestion. I will, it will, having dealt with the drive-through will undermine pedestrian bicycle safety, contradicting our long-term commitment to a walkable people-first perimeter center. So those are my thoughts.
Catherine, go ahead.
May I ask how many seats are inside? You can come up and answer. Oh, and thank you for reminding me about Stacy.
Fifty-six.
Oh, fifty-six. Plus the outdoor seating.
That's an addition.
Yep, so. Not much parking. Okay.
Stacy? Stacy, do you have questions?
Yeah, I do actually. And at some point during the meeting, if anybody wants to see Winter Wonderland, I'm actually in Idaho where we got like three inches of snow and it did not shut the city down, but I do have a very pretty scenic mountain lake covered in the snow behind me. Madeline, real quick, you said that they'd gone down from 4,000 feet to 3,000 square feet. Did I understand that right?
Yeah, they've adjusted the size of their building slightly, mostly in, I believe in response to resizing due to the stormwater pipe that runs underneath the property.
Gotcha. And just so I can kind of put that in perspective, what's the current bank square footage?
Oh, that I don't know off the top of my head. I believe it's around four or 5,000 square feet.
Okay.
Do I?
I couldn't, sorry, I, I just was trying to, you know, put a size to size comparison.
Forty-three hundred square feet.
Okay, so, so, okay, so it's actually a little bit smaller. And then I, actually, while you're still up there, Madeline, if you could go through their site plan, and I understand where the dumpsters are going to be. And there was a little bit of the view from Ashford Dumbly Road, like we can't see the dumpsters from, I guess not Ashford Dumbly, but perimeter center west, right?
Location of the dumpsters is in the same exact place that they are now. The screening of them will be updated slightly, but because of that grade change, they're not necessarily exactly visible on, on perimeter center west.
Gotcha. Okay, I can see that. So then in the site plan where it says X dumpsters pad, X dumpsters, what does that become?
Sorry, I'm trying to find where on the site plan you're referring to.
Well, you have, like, it's, it's labeled CL and it's where they're, the proposed.
I believe you're referring to the adjacent properties dumpster.
Is that? Oh, is that the adjacent property? Okay.
It's not necessarily a separate property, but the adjacent larger buildings.
Gotcha.
I believe that's what that references to. Where they have the, that's for the Chipotle and the brown bag seafood and everything.
Gotcha. Okay. And then I, I'm always sensitive to the fact that it could be a Zaxby's tomorrow, it could be a drive-through vape shop the next day. Maybe not there. So I want to understand, it's not, Zaxby's is not buying the land, but is it, will they own the building or is it a lease for the building too?
It will be, I can't look at you, Stacy, I'm sorry. It will be a long-term ground lease of the property itself. We will be building the building. If you want to put something on there that limits the use, I'm pretty sure that even though it was a 2003 zoning, that things like vape shops, head shops, et cetera, restricted in the original zoning and we're not asking to change that. But if you want to add that as a condition, I'm happy to do that one as well. I don't think anybody wants that.
I just, I, I mean, that was what came to my head. As an example. Okay. And I just, when you had said like, this is an honest question, like if it's going to be the Zaxby's flagship, I just was wondering if they are owning the, the building, but just not the land. I just kind of wanted to know how much skin they had in the game for what it's going to be their flagship restaurant.
It's, it's a long-term ground lease, but all of the expenses of building the property out and developing the property belong to Zaxby's. So they have a hefty financial interest in the site.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's it. And Kathy, I'm really thankful that this requires two reads, so I will see you in person.
Rob?
I just, this is a question just for staff. So this has been before the planning commission, what, like seven times now? If you could just summarize for me what their main issues and concerns that they raised or just main comments they had on this, just for my own edification, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah. So ultimately, the planning commission recommended approval. They did ask a lot of questions about the internal traffic flow and they sort of shared the, the same questions that you all have. You know, as far as staff's analysis go, we're really concerned about impacts, you know, when we're looking at a use like this off-site, you know, impacts on perimeter center west and, you know. So our analysis was, was limited mostly to that, but the planning commission did. I have quite a few questions about the internal, you know, pedestrian circulation and car circulation. In response to some of those comments, the applicant made changes to their site plan. There's, I don't know if it's being shared on the screen right now. But I wonder if IT maybe could share it. But they added the sidewalk circulation to the north part of the property adjacent to the drive aisle between them and the, the other parking lot. So that was added in response to planning commission comments. And I would say sort of those, those are the main. That's one of the main changes that came out of those conversations.
Anybody else? I'll go, Joe.
Just to follow. I understand, you know, we have the, we have the Chipotle near next door and they have drive-throughs and then they have standalone without drive-throughs. Does Zaxby's offer any locations that do not have a drive-through? We have another applicant that has locations without a drive-through.
I asked that question too, and I think the number was 600 and some odd stores and none of them have drive-throughs. I mean, does that, all of them have drive-throughs? Excuse me. I had it backwards.
Interesting. All right, thank you.
Who else? So I have a question for the property owner, if that's okay. So like at least one of my colleagues mentioned, it's pretty busy over there already. And I think your plan is for people to park in front of Fidelity. Am I misunderstanding? Where, is it Fidelity that's in that center?
Yes, but Fidelity, that parking is exclusive to those tenants. It would be the large lot behind culinary and.
Okay, but those lots, they're pretty full. I mean, as someone who goes to Brown Bag and Sweet, Sweet Greens fairly often, those lots are not empty. And sometimes they're pretty full. And if, I, I think it's going to force people into the drive-through. I, I just think people won't, even if their intention is to eat inside, they're going to give up. But I'm also concerned and it's obviously not my decision to make for the impact it's going to have on these restaurants that are already there. This is not at all comparable to a bank in 2025. I don't think except for paydays when banks, when that bank was built, that it's comparable to any other day at a bank. It's a very different use. It's a much more intense use in terms of cars. And I like Zaxby's. We almost never use a drive-through. I realize I say that as someone who has the ability to walk in, but this is, as I said two weeks ago, this is not an area that doesn't have drive-throughs. There's one at McDonald's, there's two Chick-fil-A's and a Wendy's within spitting distance and more choices as you go towards Sandy Springs. I under, I learned from my colleague's question about drive-throughs that there are no Zaxby's without drive-throughs. There are certainly lots of fast food and fast casual restaurants that are doing restaurants without, that do have locations without drive-throughs. I'm not sure it would totally solve the crowding problem that I think this might create for your existing businesses that frankly were there first. I think I should have probably had a question in there, but.
I think I can speak a little bit to that and this has been kind of a push for us operationally as well, but as we have mentioned previously, we've got this very large 400-plus spot parking deck that largely goes unused. Some of you might be familiar, we just put a signage package through for wayfinding to hopefully, over time, kind of give more exposure to that parking deck. A lot of people who, who patron the lawn are parking behind Hobnob and Culinary. That includes Superica, Jenny's, Hockers, all of those tenants there. So certainly a push for us is how do we activate that parking deck better? And the first step we took was through that wayfinding signage. There's been a lot of outreach to tenants on how we can kind of use them and their staff as well to help guide, you know, especially recurring patrons to that deck because it's very convenient, especially for those lawn tenants. Not, obviously not for the Chipotle and the Sweet Green. That's kind of where they need to park. But it's, it's certainly something that we've been, we've been pushing to help kind of control traffic and parking in the property.
So I'm incredibly grateful, I know that your employer knows, for the work y'all have done at Ashford Lane. I think it's nothing short of phenomenal. As a family, my husband and I, or we eat and patron, we're patrons at a lot of the establishments there and we attend your events. And we park in the parking garage. In fact, I like to park in the parking garage because it gives me a sense on a weekend night how busy things are. I love when I have to go to the top floor and nothing makes me happier. However, I know from my colleagues in cities that have built public parking garages that patrons of restaurants, it's like the path of least resistance. So if they're going to Hobnob or Grana, they very well may not be looking at the parking deck as an option. They may end up at the parking deck. Quite frankly, sometimes we're going just to Jenny's and I'd like to park right there and I can't, so I go to the parking garage. But it concerns me a little bit, it concerns me a lot about the impact period on the existing restaurants, which are, they're there first. And so, and I, and I think signage could help. I almost think you're going to have to pay for security and maybe we condition that as well, Kathy. We put in some language about parking management. Something that allows, because I'm afraid this time, a year after this opens, that center could be empty. So it's just, you know, because if people can't, people are hungry and they have a short time for lunch. So with that, we will see you again in, is it four weeks, Madeline, two weeks? What is it? December 15th, two weeks. Okay. Unless anybody has anything else. Thank you very much, Kathy. We'll get to see you one more time. And really, you don't really want to leave us. All right. Next is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments on anything or need, go ahead, John?
Mayor, I'd like to poll item number nine. We can do it after the consent agenda or whenever you feel appropriate.
Just make it number, make it, keep it as number nine. Just move it from business items. All right. Anybody else have questions or comments about anything on here?
Motion to move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved by John, oh, second by Tom. Stacy, did you have any questions? Always take, seeing no questions or comments, I call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And is Tiffany here? Okay. Do you need to read this, Sharon? You probably don't, right? Okay.
Tiffany, I'll kick it off since I started it. I have questions regarding the right-of-way acquisition. We're contracting with an engineering firm to do engineering for 24 parcels to try to figure out what we need. Is that, is that, am I saying that correctly or give me the spiel of what we're doing here tonight?
Yeah, so our designer that we've already hired has identified the places where we need to perform right-of-way acquisition. And so we're hiring a consultant that specializes in that service and actually discussing with the property owners and getting the property like appraisals.
Is that property on both the north and south side of the street or is it just on one side?
I think it's primarily on the north side where the path is.
All right, so the path, the 12-foot path is on the north side. So we're really looking to find out what land we need on that north side.
We have plans that have shown what we need. So now we're going to start the right-of-way acquisition services to discuss with the property owners what they'll, what they'll provide it to us or that coordination. And so then we'll work with the designer to finalize right-of-way plans.
Got it. I looked at the project page on the Public Works website and I'm seeing a conflict where the website currently does not go all the way to Vermac. So it doesn't show what properties are in question. This project is going to Vermac, but on the website, the webs, the project doesn't go that far yet. What, what's changed?
Are you talking about the concept?
Probably, yes.
Layout? We don't have a concept for the additional, I think it was for additional properties to take it to Vermac. Phase three, it made sense to extend this project to there to be a safe place to finish phase two and pick up phase three, which will go from there to the, the village area.
Okay.
We have talked to those four property owners before y'all added it to the project.
Okay, so that's, that's good information for me. So those four properties then are aware. Are all 24 properties aware that there's going to be a right-of-way acquisition from them?
I, we have not.
That's what, that's what, that's what this is.
This is going to talk with them. We, we have sent out letters, I believe, to the people on the corridor about the project specifically, you know, to remind them about the project, but we have not started any negotiations or we've not taken plans to anybody yet.
Okay, great. Thank you. No other questions?
Move approved.
Move by Joe.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion or questions? Stacy, you okay? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Sharon, that passes six to one. Councilman Henigan voted no. All right. Chief Carlson? Oh, I'm sorry, 10 is Jay. Sorry. I didn't X things out properly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be a brief item. This is a termination of the MRI lease. For those that are unaware, the building when we bought it, we inherited a tenant, MRI. They've been a wonderful tenant over the years, but the lease finally expired this year. One thing we've all learned over the past six months is it takes a lot of effort to physically remove an MRI machine from a city hall. The back wall was missing for a few days, the ceiling's all ripped out. And during that, they did get out by the time the lease expired. However, on the day of the lease, there was still significant. I'm going to call it damage, though it's not damage as in they tore up the walls. They had to physically tear out the ceiling and the floor and the like. We knew that there would have to be some restoration work done in order for us to begin looking at using it in a new space. So between the tenant and ourselves, Donnie Sullivan, our building official, we worked out a compromise, it was probably about. There's probably about $70,000 worth of work to be done. So in lieu of them getting a penalty on it, what they're going to do is pay us the estimated amount, 73,7,000, 73,700. Less the deposit that they had on board already. And we'll take that and apply it towards restoring things such as the roof and the ceiling. This is not to make it usable. This is to make it so that we can construct it out. We're working with an architect already on um, looking at the space. Right now, we do know two uses that are going to be down there is an expansion of the evidence room for the police department as part of it. And also moving IT down there because IT over the years has, the configuration we have upstairs doesn't work. Then the rest, we're still working on those details. We do need council approval for this because it's a termination of a lease that has expired technically.
Move approved.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any questions or discussion? Oh, go ahead, and we lost. Oh, no, we didn't. Okay, go ahead. Have they paid this money?
No, 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 not until, not until this is done, not until this is approved by council.
The agreement. So you're suggesting that the agreement needs to be signed by us before they.
Correct. Wha- what happens is when we do this, we'll get a check for the net of 69,000 once it's signed between both parties.
Great. Anybody else? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that passes. I think it's six zero, Sharon, because we, I don't see Stacy. Are you there, Stacy? Oh, she's there, she's, yes, okay, she says yes. Seven to zero, okay, sorry, Stacy.
Sorry, I forgot to turn my camera on.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Chief, now it's you.
Okay, Mayor and Council, um, we have been working closely with the Georgia State University campus. And they have agreed, um, or we have come up with an MOU, um, that I'm requesting that all of you approve. Um, to get their cameras um, real time access into our real time crime center. They were very eager for us to um, get that. So in case any critical incidents that occur on campus, we'd be able to integrate that into our real time crime center. So it's no cost to us, um, it has been through legal. So I'm just requesting that uh, approval so we can add their cameras to our center.
Thank you. Anybody have questions or comments? Uh, Rob.
So this isn't necessarily related to this, but there's been um, a little chatter um, around the use of flock cameras and whatnot. Um, and I, um, I think it would be useful in general if we had our policies for the flock cameras and for the drones. I don't know if they're readily available on the website, um, but just.
I don't know if they're available on the website, but I have them.
It might be useful to have those available for citizens to look at to see, you know, how is they going to be used. Um, and so that would just be my suggestion. In terms of this, I think this is a wonderful idea, so thank you.
Sir, okay, absolutely.
Catherine.
My question is the same, Chief. It is about an email that was sent about the security flaws with this flock system. Do you know if we have um, double access to secure it or how is it secured?
Uh, so it, it's secured through the same way we use our GCI, so which is our Georgia Crime Information Center. That's how we read, uh, that's how we run people. Um, so they use the same feature uh, that we use for um, GCIC. And NC, and NCIS, which is the National Crime Information Center, so it's secure. Um, they handle all that data. Um, we only use it as an investigative tool. Um, we do have audit procedures in place and policies um, to make sure that it's used appropriately with our staff.
Right, so how many people on the staff would have access to Flock to enter a license plate to follow?
Uh, all sworn members, uh, including our crime analyst.
Yep. All right, this is just concern, what, how, how long you retain it?
Uh, retain for 30 days.
Okay.
And it, that's Flock. Flock retains the information, we don't.
Oh, okay. So. Do you have independent security? Would you say that?
No, Flock handles all of that. They just give us access uh, as part of our investigations that we have access to. Uh, that's the only way we look at it is if we get an alert or if we are currently investigating something that involved a motor vehicle.
Can it be breached as in if we're on a police officer's cellphone?
I would not, I couldn't speak on that. Yeah, all the securities are held through Flock.
Okay, I guess I just don't, I don't know if Flock, I, I presume that they care about privacy and security. And it'd be good to know how they're handling that.
Yes, ma'am.
I think to Rob's point in a co- a conversation I had with Eric, I think earlier today. That it's probably time for a presentation from Flock and you, um, it doesn't have to be in December, obviously. Just to go over, because I know you're aware that unfortunately, there has been some bad behavior with some of this data. Um, by law enforcement officers and probably others. And I, I think I'd like to know, like, is there two step authorization, like, you know, or, or uh, who can? Who's watching, who's observing it? We don't have to answer that today. That's not what this is about. This is about using our real time crime center uh, to monitor what happens. Or to be able to look at what, if something bad is happening on Georgia State's perimeter campus, right? That's all we're talking about today. So if you could get with Eric and Sharon and schedule a date uh, to bring in probably somebody from Flock or however you choose to make the presentation to answer our questions. I think that that would be very helpful. I'm a big fan of uh, using technology uh, to help uh, keep eyes on what's happening in our community. Um, and so I just think we need some assurances that we are doing what we are supposed to do in order in handling the data. And that Flock is too, and I'm certain Flock won't be surprised that we have questions. So, um, okay, with that, is there a motion? No.
Move to approve.
Move by Rob.
Second.
Second, any further discussion or questions? Uh, seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously, Sharon. And I believe you have to read the next one when you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Yes, do you want me to explain? Okay, I apologize. I um, uploaded the Saxby's ordinance to the agenda item for the Raising Canes. I just s- slept 25 dash O one and slept 25 dash O two, just got a little bit confused when I, when I uploaded those. Um, so I do apologize um, for that, I guess, Scribner's error um, on that um, agenda item. Uh, the conditions for the uh, project are listed in the memo, but I apologize for the.
So the error is the number, not the documentation?
The, the document is the incorrect ordinance. I op- I got the 25 O one and 25 O two ordinance.
So Mayor, I can't read the caption because it's the Saxby's ordinance rather than this one.
Okay, but the documentation, well, the supporting documents is raising cane.
All of the supporting documents are raising canes.
Okay. So what, we need to defer something? What do we do?
How was it advertised? Was it advertised?
It was all advertised correctly. It's, it was just my fault when I was adding documents to the agenda. I uploaded the wrong ordinance.
I guess what I'm, and I, I'm asking something because I'm not a technology guy. Can we not get it correct so that if we go on with the meeting, we get it correct tonight and do it now?
I can send Sharon the correct ordinance.
We could probably read the caption if I can get it sent.
I just want to, I want the presentation to be correct or we need to defer.
The rest of the, the presentation is correct. I think you need to ask the applicant what their preference is first. And then they were here over on the side, I think. Um, and then we can take like a five minute recess to load up the proper ordinance. The support, I want to be clear, the supporting doc, that's why I was confused because I'm like, no, I saw the re- the documents for the right application.
Yeah, but it's the.
It has all the right applicant presentation, okay. It's just the ordinance, okay. All right, so if you'll figure. Okay, and then we can recess for a few minutes.
Harold Buckley, 2849 Pace, uh, Pace Ferry Road in Atlanta, I represent Raising Canes. We are fine with pausing to allow whatever fix needs to occur and then going ahead with the meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, I need a motion for uh, how much time do you think you need, Sharon?
I can send it to you almost immediately.
Okay, how about seven minutes? So that gives you a few minutes. All right, so we will resume at 7:23. Thank you. Um, I need a motion to res- oh, no, I get to just say it, right? That we're recessing until 7:23. Thank you. All right, uh, we are ready to reconvene. I think I just announced we've reconvened. And we will start that one over, please. Sharon, when you're ready, if you could read item number 12.
Yes, an ordinance to allow a drive through restaurant at parcel number 18350 03003 in consideration of special land use permit case SLUP 25 dash O one for 4570 Ashford Dunwoody Road.
Is Madeline here? Do we have a technical problem now?
Just a minute.
Yeah, you know what we're going to do? We're going to move this. We're going to go to the next item, if that's okay, because it's just discussion and then come back. Michael Smith, can you be ready? Do I have to do anything to rearrange the agenda?
Like to make a motion that we move item number 12 to the end of the agenda.
Uh, not the end, because the applicant's here. How about after number 13?
Okay, after number 13. So it would take uh, number 13 next on the agenda.
Right, okay. Any second? I need a second. Any discussion, hearing none, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That passes unanimously. It was John and uh, Rob for this. Sharon, can you hear me for the motion to change the agenda? Okay. All right, Michael.
As I think uh, everyone on the council is aware, we have a radar speed permit that we get from the state. And it's renewable periodically. The, and the purpose of it is to allow the police to do speed enforcement using radar or other detection devices. And as a condition of getting that permit, we have to submit a list of roads with the proposed speed limit. Um, and then that's reviewed by the Georgia Department of Transportation to make sure the speeds are appropriate for the types of roads. And then the permits issued by the Department of Public Safety. So the current permit for Dunwoody is expires next year at the end of twenty twenty-six. It's been discussed with council previously, and it was part of the road safety action plan to look at speed reductions on, on certain roads. Um, and we've done that this year. The, on the, in the memo, there's a list of roads with proposed speed limit changes. There, and also some school zone adjustments, mainly around Austin Elementary, because the school zone hasn't been adjusted from when the school moved. So these, the, the proposed changes are all supported by speed studies, which is one of the requirements of the, the state law and regulations on this. One road that City Council did ask us to look at was Peeler Road, which we were not, we had an outside consultant look at it, and we looked at it internally, and neither neither one was able to come up with a study that would justify the reduction now. We do think that once the proposed path and some of the traffic calming that we're wanting to include in that project are added, that we'll have a better chance of, of getting a study, of, of actually, one, reducing speeds and then having a study that would support that speed reduction. So, um, we're here tonight to get the council's feedback on these proposed changes, and if, if the council's agrees with it, then we would probably after the first of the year submit a new list of roads that, for the state to review for the updated permit.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Catherine?
Ashford Donnie Road. If I'm traveling north, or if I'm traveling south, if I've seen one speed limit, I'm gonna presume that is the speed limit of the road. Why would we have two speed limits on this road?
Well, the, you know, Brookhaven recently changed to thirty-five south of two eighty-five. And so what we're proposing is that that's, it's gonna change either way, I guess, if we do forty on Ashford Dunwoody Road. It would either change at two eighty-five, or we change further north. So we're proposing that the thirty-five would extend up to percent perimeter center west. You know, with the congestion around the mall, that's, that's really kind of the operating speed down there anyway. And then it would, it would be forty further north. Of course, it would have to be, you know, signs added at that point for, to change it, but.
Why not make it thirty-five the whole way?
Is that, would council like to?
I, I think it is, yeah, harder for the, for the drivers to, to take note of the change in the speed limit as we're driving.
Did Brookhaven do it all the way to Peachtree Boulevard? Is it thirty-five now all the way?
I think so, but I'm not, I'm not positive.
I think that I agree with Catherine on the split, and I think it's important to remember for everyone at home watching that if we have a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, and Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, if all you get pulled over for is speeding, it can be fifty, you can go fifty-four, correct? You have to answer the microphone, sorry. Or am I misunderstanding?
Are you asking when we can cite them?
Yes, so in Georgia, I thought you had to be going ten miles over unless this is school zone.
Correct.
So can you cite, so fifty, so is Ashford Dunwoody considered residential?
No.
So what is the rule for Ashford Dunwoody?
Uh, ten or more.
Oh, ten or more, okay. So they could be going fifty-five on Ashford Dunwoody and not get a ticket, or, no, I guess ten, fifty-four and not get a ticket, correct? Okay, all right. That's, I think that's, to me, the, kind of shocking. I mean, for many of us, that's the speed limit on interstates when we learn to drive, and even not even when we learn to drive, when fifty-five was the speed limit on an interstate. So.
All right, I, I would like it to be one speed, you know, whatever you want it to be. I want to ask about Peeler. I understand for the changing of the speed limits, that we have a five-year window for that. If Peeler is uh, upgraded in less than the time it takes to review this speed limit letter, what would, we couldn't do it?
But we, um, the city can submit for a new permit at any time.
Anytime.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I'm not sure how long it takes the state to review it. The chief might know, but uh, let's say that we get the new permit at the end of next year or in early twenty twenty-seven. I, I think they're good for three years, so that would, that would be twenty, probably twenty-thirty, but if the city decided that they wanted to make more changes before that twenty, they don't have to wait till twenty-thirty. You don't have to wait.
All right, that's, that's good news. Thanks.
Uh, Rob?
Kind of along the same lines of Catherine's question on Winter's Chapel Road, that pops in and out of the city of Dunwoody. Are we gonna end up with a situation where we have the speed limit shifting depending on which segment of road you're on, or I guess, just give me a breakdown on how it looks now and how this would change that.
Yeah, yeah, so the part that's outside of Dunwoody, it's in Peachtree Corners, but from our understanding, because we did talk to Peachtree Corners, it's set by Gwinnett. Before we submit, we do want to try to see if, working through the Peachtree Corners representatives for that area, see if we can get Gwinnett to agree to change it. If nothing else, in the part where it goes out of Dunwoody and, and then back into Dunwoody, to have that all consistent. It's, it's ultimately up to Gwinnett whether they'll agree to that or not. Uh, you know, we could still, we still would plan to submit our changes if Gwinnett doesn't agree, but it's possible the state could come back and say, this is too many changes in a short area.
That's just my concern is, look, have it be consistent for a reasonable stretch.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, John, did you have your hand up? Okay, Joe, okay.
Hey, Michael, thank you so much. I think it was, uh, twenty twenty-one or whatever. I think we were still on, uh, COVID, doing all remote calls, when I asked for you to just give a discussion item on how speed limits were set, because I know some cities, um, had, prior to this, prior to this agenda item, um, co-edited, put it in their code, in their MUNICode, their actual what you've attached for this document here. They had their school, uh, speed limits were voted on by the council, it was adopted, and it was in their code with speed limits and so on. I, 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 I know about that one. We know Woodstock, Georgia, I know you cited a Georgia state code about the minimum, the slowest speed limits could be twenty-five in the state, but yet there are speed limits below twenty-five in the state. Um, do you, can you kind of give us a one-on-one, like Woodstock? Lowered speed, I just, regardless of what you're proposing today. By the way, I, I appreciate slower speeds, but can you kind of do a, don't want to put you on the spot, but you know, where can we, what Georgia law allowed, uh, Woodstock to go down to fifteen miles an hour in their downtown?
I, I'm not familiar with that. Um, and I don't, I, I listed the reference to the state law in here, and my reading of it is, it says twenty-five is the lowest, but I'm not gonna, I, I can't make a legal opinion on that, but, and I'm not familiar with what Woodstock did, but I, I'm not aware of the state allowing under twenty-five miles an hour.
I bet they're not using cameras to enforce that. I bet they're not using speed cameras.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna do radar. They're not gonna do radar. They just, um, I'm sure Richard can kind of tell you, because he lives there, but I don't want to put folks on the spot, but this is a discussion. I would like to I still want to keep bending that needle and educating folks here on what is the art of the possible in the state of Georgia, uh, as far as setting speed limits. Um, and you, you mentioned the speed study, Michael. Can you attach that and provide that to council in this packet, the speed study?
Sure.
Was that speed study ju- and, and what metrics were used? Because I know, like, again, I'm just going back to Woodstock, what they did maybe four years ago, after those three or four adults and children had his fatality downtown, and they hired consultants that did a holistic viewpoint, and that also looked at the built environment, and it just didn't do the eighty-fifth percentile. So.
Ours didn't either.
Okay.
Uh, the, the, there's a whole process, each, there's a study for each one of these roads, and each study is about five or six pages long.
That's good.
So it looks at speed, the, the traffic volume, the, the surrounding character, pedestrian, bicycle activity. Uh, there's, there's a whole kind of process there that.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can include those. It'll be probably about fifty pages of information, but.
I think it's good education-wise how, how these kind of things come to be. Um, and for future, if we could just, also just as a placeholder, maybe we do it at the retreat about just, in general, what other municipalities, how do they get to certain things? I know Decatur had to do speed, they had to re-engineer first. I remember they, this was just a straight eighty-fifth percentile in Decatur, and they wanted to lower the speeds, but they couldn't. But then they put in traffic calming, and then they had lower speeds, and then they were able to lower the speed limit. So, kind of like what you're saying on Peeler, when we build in those facilities, I believe that I have, I might got a good indication that then it'll show characteristics to reduce that, right?
Right, yeah. I, I, as far as I know, our process is similar or the same as other surrounding cities. I know, like, for Brookhaven, for instance, our part-time traffic engineer also, consultant also supports Brookhaven and was involved in their requesting their reduction. So I think it's a, a similar process for, for us as the surrounding cities.
Great. And, um, I had to email asking specifically that small segment on, so I've got the Jet Ferry, Mount Vernon, Dunwoody Club Drive Triangle over there. I know some of that is adjacent to Sandy Springs, but the segment Jet Ferry that we own, uh, it's so short. I, I, I don't even think we could do radar. I'm not the expert, but it's the topography and the curve there, and it's such a short line of distance. That's thirty-five miles an hour now. Had that, has that been entertained of reduction, that speed in that, that short segment?
We, we took a look at it, and I think you could justify thirty. I think it's not in the permit now, uh, probably because it is so short and would be difficult, or I may not be able to run radar on it. Um, so we're not, it's not listed now, so we really don't necessarily have to justify the speed, but I did look at it, and I think thirty would, would be justified. You're gonna, you'll have the same issue there though, with, once you go into Sandy Springs, I think it's thirty-five, so you're gonna have, you'll have different speed limits if, if you choose to do that.
So they've got a four-way stop, they gotta stop, except when I walked over for lunch today, and the car didn't stop, by the way. I, I, I walked through the intersection, and that's a separate subject, and the, and the car behind me, but, um, you know, we're gonna repave that next year, right? And you're gonna reconfigure so there'll be a bike lane on the, on the one side. So I think with that design, I'd, I'd like to propose that we don't have to have that with this packet, if we're not gonna send this to GDOT, if it's not gonna be in their list. If we're doing this locally, setting a speed limit, I'd like to propose twenty-five on that segment, especially after we re redesign that. On your ferry, okay?
I want to talk about enforcement, but we.
Yeah, so, and then the segment on Mount Vernon, I guess that kind of comes to the off again, on again, if we're gonna keep, so, Mount Vernon, the same speed limit altogether. Uh, if it's more confusing for drivers, or is it focused on safety? Because if you look at Mount Vernon from Dunwoody Club Drive over to Tilly Mill, that seems to be very slow, fairly congested area, too, that would potentially warrant a reduction from thirty-five?
Uh, we, we had not looked at Mount Vernon or proposed any changes right now on Mount Vernon. Uh, if, if we wanted to make changes there, we, we probably need to do a s- speed study before we submit it.
Think after the product, let's wait till after the project's built and see what the, the built environment looks like after that in a couple of years, I suppose. All right, so thank you. Just if you could add to the, the speed study to the discussion, and then eventually, I'd just like to hear how municipalities can go below twenty-five and what that entails for future conversation. Thank you.
And John?
Interesting comments. Let me wrap my head around it. So there's a, one for a permission from GDOT. We're gonna give them a list of streets and speeds and say we're, we're allowed to do radar detection. That's pretty much correct. If we do not list a street, are we able to do radar on that street?
And, and no, if it's not on the list and not approved by the state, then we can't do radar enforcement.
So are single-family residential streets, long thoroughfares through a neighborhood are currently twenty-five typically? We are not able to do, uh, speed enforcement on those?
There, there are some, in the list attached to the agenda, there are some streets in there that are neighborhood streets. I don't know if every neighborhood street is on there. I didn't really look.
No, they're not. There's some in my neighborhood that are not on there, but I saw that they're twenty-five miles an hour, and that's the minimum lowest speed limit allowed. So I was fine with that. Don't change it. The problem I see is if we don't add that street into your document going to GDOT, then we can't do speed enforcement. So in other words, we may want to massage the list. In reality, we may want to see where there's problems and make that list three, four times bigger in order that we can do enforcement.
Well.
Or am I off-base? I'm just trying to understand.
We'd have to look at that. I was, I'm not familiar with how the list was originally developed in twenty nine, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. It may be that some of those streets are because of the site distance or other reasons.
I, I understand that in some aspects, you can't, if the grade is downhill, you can't do speed enforcement. If it's around a curve, you can't do speed enforcement.
Yeah.
I understand all of that. That being said, there's hundreds of streets that are not listed, or segments of streets that are not listed, where there may be residential issues and have raised where they, they would like to have speed enforcement. We put up now the speed camera, the speed, uh, sign that warns people, hey, you're going too fast in this neighborhood, but we can't, because we don't give GDOT that list, we can't do speed enforcement.
Yeah, I guess, I, I don't know if anybody's still here that developed that original list, but, I mean, we can go back and try to see was that considered in two thousand nine or two thousand ten, or do we need to, you know, open it back up again?
My assumption was probably just an adoption of what DeKalb County had in place. Um, but yeah, great points, or, you know, that's something that we can definitely revisit. Um, I'll get my, uh, traffic enforcement, uh, sergeant to look into that and see, uh, see what we can do.
All right.
And especially with the amount of complaints that we do get. You know, I'll, I'll have him compile a list as well, and make sure that, where we are getting complaints, that we're able to enforce. I mean, just because we can't do speed enforcement, doesn't mean we can't do other types of.
Correct. So since you're at the microphone, how many officers can do speed enforcement?
I'd have to get a list. They have to either be radar or laser certified. I don't have a list in front of me, but.
At any given, at any given shift, how many devices do we have to turn out? Like, the day shift, can, how many devices do you have to put out to the streets of any given day?
It's like three or four lasers that we have, and then our traffic enforcement officers actually have, um, radars in the vehicles, um, that are permanently, uh, mounted in the vehicles. But yeah, we've got about three or four lasers that we keep, and then they, the officers check them out.
All right, so depending on the officer's skill set and, you know, certification, you might have six per shift, maybe?
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay, um, let's get back to the question at hand in the sense of this list that we have in front of us. I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around, what are we trying to regulate? Are we trying to regulate the average speed of the average person going to work or driving, not in rush hour, not in congestion? The average speed, is it correct currently, or are we worried about the ten miles an hour? Are we trying to regulate the enforcement of the ten miles over? That's what I'm trying to wrap my head around, because it seems like this is an enforcement issue more than a average issue. So maybe, again, I'm not asking a question, I'm just, to me, it seems like it's, it's a little bit off. We have different types of streets. Some streets, Ashford Dunwoody, there's different ratings on streets, you know, single-family residential or residential versus commercial, there's something in the middle. Um, Ashford Dunwoody, very busy, hard to speed, except at, you know, nine, ten o'clock at night when there's nobody on there. But you have your single-family houses that have different ratings as well. Shambly Dunwoody, I could say have houses on both sides, and Vermac, houses on both sides, but they're different, different tiers of streets, right? Michael, what would you consider them?
Well, I mean, there, there's, uh, arterial collector local streets is kind of how they're classified.
Okay.
And, like, Ashford Dunwoody, Shambly Dunwoody, Mount Vernon would be arterial, Womack, Vermac would be collector, Peeler would be collector. That's kind of the hierarchy.
And I'm just trying to wonder if we, looking at that hierarchy, did we set speed limits based on that? Or it's hard to say, because it seems like there's a disconnect on a few of them.
I, I think based on the safety action plan, where the goal was to try to I I think based on the safety action plan where the goal was to try to lower overall. Operating speeds around the city and these segments were identified. Like Ashford Dunwoody and Winter's Chapel, those are the two uh, highest speed limits in the city outside the interstate. So trying to bring those down, especially with adding paths on those roads. Shambly Dunwoody in the Village is a congested commercial area. Uh, Meadow Lane and Crown Point and Perimeter North, that's a lot about just creating a consistent speed. Because it kind of varies over those three roads that are all connected now. And then Vermac and Womack, you know, they're they're collectors, they're, you know. Very residential school zones, so just, and then Womack also. The the hills on Womack, there's places where you really can't see far enough, so a lower speed limit is justified from that standpoint.
And again, you're you're talking environmental or, you know, the lay of the land, setting the speed limit to match the streets. The street environment. I like that aspect, I guess, and I like then from a citywide perspective, trying to have a uniform. For collectors versus residential versus your main thoroughfares. How have we looked at speed limits for schools? For example, on Womack. There's uh, some school zones in there. What's gonna happen if we lower the thirty-five to thirty? What does the school zone reduce to at that?
It'll still be twenty-five uh, for the for the during the school zone hours. Um, we are proposing to. Extend the Dunwoody Elementary School Zone about four hundred feet mainly because. Where it is now is coming over a hill and you don't really see it until you get over the hill, so the, this would move it to the top of the hill.
Again, making changes to this list for environmental reasons or for the lay of the land or with the scope of the street, that makes sense to me. Wholeheartedly agree. Changing just for the rate of safety, I drove here with almost no cars in front of me. And I looked down at my speed limit and I was doing right very close to what's posted today. And it felt safe, it felt fine, but again, I'm just trying to understand the why. One final question, if I could, Ashford Center Parkway was reduced a few years ago, it's not on the list. Explain to me how that happened, why that happened. I'm guessing it's again because of the curves, because of the lay of the land, we reduced it from that perspective. But it's not on the list, so therefore not eligible for enforcement, right? Or how is that, where is that street?
Uh, it's so you're saying it's not on the list. I didn't look at that one specifically.
Again, I'm just, I don't know if I have the complete list and you.
I thought it was on the list.
Maybe it is.
It's on the list.
That was increased from twenty-five to thirty.
Is that what happened? I knew it changed.
That did.
Okay.
The, yeah, so it's thirty now. Uh, and that's another thing, we're taking Womack to thirty, that would be, you know, because it feeds into Womack. It would make that consistent all the way through. So we weren't proposing any uh, other changes to Ashford Center Parkway.
I guess tonight I've asked more questions than I have answers. I really don't know where I lay on some of this, because again, I would prefer that we make changes. To the environmental aspect of the streets, the curves, the the real problems. Changing speed limits where there's heavy traffic and we're never gonna go that fast. I I don't know, sometimes forty-five might be okay, but if we're doing it for the enforcement aspect of never allowing somebody to go, you know. Fifty-four miles an hour in Ashford Dunwoody, then we, maybe we should be doing a whole lot more enforcement now to prove the point that that's needed. So I'll defer to others for the conversation.
One last thing.
There's a great graphic out there about lowering, if if a pedestrian is hit. Uh, forty miles an hour greater, they're gonna die. Ninety percent is gonna die. Nine, one out of ten die. Thirty, it's half fifty percent die. So that's a huge difference. If it's twenty miles an hour, nine out of ten gonna live. So really keep that in mind about the pedestrian safety and who's gonna die if they get hit at a vehicle speed limit.
Lynn, can I?
Yes, sorry, Stacy, sorry.
It's okay. John, I I'm really confused as to what you were talking about. Like, you're talking about curves and roads and I like that aspect. I mean, this is about speed limit, so I guess, could you kind of uh, explain what you meant in your last wrap-up statement?
I guess when I'm looking at changes for something like Ashford Center Parkway that was very curvy. I thought that speed limit went down. I was surprised to hear it went up. Or the change where we're extending the speed. School zone over a hilly area, that makes sense to me. In other words, changing school speeds, changing speed limits. Where it's environmentally makes sense to do so, I'm I'm in favor of that. And I would rather prefer to have universal speeds be connector. The the residential, the the the, there's three different classifications of streets. And I'd like to have some uniformity on those three classifications based on what's there. I mean. I don't know, I'm just looking at this holistically. And I, the environmental one makes immediate sense to me. The others, I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Okay, now, Mi- Michael Smith.
Stacy, you gotta talk louder.
Okay, can you, is this better? I don't even know where my my microphone is on this computer, not gonna lie. For Ashford Center Parkway, it's at thirty. We tried to get it to twenty-five and they said, no, it's at thirty. Is that, isn't that correct?
No.
No, it was twenty-five at some point and then it was changed to thirty. The last time the permit was submitted, I think.
I mean, so certainly to match it to Womack, like you say, because feeds in, that makes sense. Um, okay. Um, just out of curiosity, what's the timing on all of this?
The the permit expires at the end of next year, so.
End of twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
We we have twelve months to to get a new permit, but um, you know, I think, but. Depending on the conclusion here tonight, we can either submit it early next year or we can go back and do some more work on. Certain areas and submit it later in the year. Uh, the the one question. Well, we have to go look at the residential streets that aren't on the list. That'll take a little bit of time. And then um. You know, I don't think we're gonna include Jet Ferry, but we do need some directional, the consensus of council on what. What they want that speed limit to be.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I understand, like, because certainly a residential street at twenty-five miles an hour is what G dot or, like, that's the. That's a permanent organization, correct?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So their expectation would be a residential street would be twenty-five miles an hour, correct?
Correct, right.
So why?
That street.
So so why wouldn't the police be able to run radar if it's a, an acceptable residential street?
There's, there's other requirements. Do you want to speak to that or about the line of sight and things like that?
I mean, I understand all that. I just find it hard to believe that if if a street isn't on the list that meets the actual physical requirements to run radar, that we wouldn't be able to run radar. That's what I'm confused about.
That's correct.
What?
That if if it's not on the list, we're not, we're unable to run radar. We can do other enforcement, you know, reckless driving, um, failure to maintain like, we can do other types of. Moving violations other than speed, but it's gotta be on the list in order for us to run a uh, speed detection radar device. Or laser.
Okay, I'll say it. That just seems silly. Um, but. But I understand it is what it is. It just seems silly. Okay, um, I think, I think I'm good.
All right, so what do you, I want to make a point about Ashford Dunwoody. First of all, I think it's important since it's one road. That we'll try our best to align with Brookhaven, but secondly, it is a highly pedestrian. I said I was gonna make one, now I'm making three, sorry. Um, it's a highly, uh, walk street is by far the street where we have the most people walking. Just for whatever reason, and it's also very dense. But also, um, there are plenty of ti- I'm live on Ashford Dunwoody Road essentially, because I'm here so much. And there are plenty of times where you can get up a nice speed on Ashford Dunwoody Road. It's, it's not always congested. Whereas I think the Village is always congested. I think it's a funny justice, whatever. Okay, so what do you need from us tonight? I don't, the Jet Ferry thing concerns me because it's Sandy Springs mostly. And I, that, I'm not sure what we should do there, because again, the confusion. But what do you need from us tonight?
I think, I think I have what I need. Uh, I mean, it sounded like there was consensus around Chamb- I mean, Ashford Dunwoody. Uh, the other ones, everybody seemed okay with. We'll look at the residential streets that aren't on the list. And then, we're not including Jet Ferry in the permit, so we could proceed with that, but I guess we'll, I guess we're gonna leave that as is until the council says. Change it otherwise.
When do you have to file this by?
Do you know how long it usually takes?
No, okay, maybe let us know that and we can figure out what to do next, just in case. Right, it's not in the packet. Okay, and then, um, for Peeler. We should not wait, Eric, we should not wait for the path to get something done to slow people down on that street. Whether it's a pilot project or a, what do you call them, Joe? Like an urban tactical urbanism or something, we've got, we owe it. To the community over there to try something. Besides putting spikes on the road, which would be inappropriate and probably illegal, there has to be some way. That we show that we are trying to slow people down. Um, and so just something to think about and if needed, we can talk about it at the retreat, but just go ahead, John.
Uh, that brings up another point, Michael, as far as what we are allowed and not allowed to do. As far as Peeler, are we allowed to put stop signs? At Lakeside and uh, all those main thoroughfares on Peeler? I mean, I look at something like Shambly, Shambly through their, uh, along the railroad tracks, every street has a stop sign. Um, why aren't we allowed to do that in the streets that we see issues with?
Uh, I, well, the the uh, manual and uniform traffic control devices explicitly. Says that stop signs shouldn't be used for traffic calming, and I think the main reason for that is that. You're probably gonna trade one problem for another. If they're not warranted, you you may affect the speeding. But then you're gonna have issues with people running stop signs or rolling through stop signs. Um, so that's, that's, I think, the. The reasoning behind that, but it it it's pretty clear that they shouldn't be used for for traffic calming. Um. And not, and those intersections on Peeler don't really meet the other requirements for that. I mean, what we had proposed in the. Path plan is some of the diverter islands at uh, like at Four Oaks and then a um, another one at. Um, Lakeside, and then we're looking at doing something at Happy Hollow that would also kind of help. Slow calm traffic.
I guess I was just thinking that if we put up a stop sign, let's say at Lakeside. If the concern is that people are coming off Winter's Chapel at a high rate of speed, going on to Peeler and continuing at that high rate of speed. Having one stop sign, let's say at Lakeside, that would be enforceable if somebody were to run the speed, this, run that stop sign, I would think. That's not enforceable by, we can't change the speed limit. If we change the speed limit today, it becomes unenforceable because it's different than what's been approved by G dot. So as far as a temporary fix or to trial, putting a stop sign somewhere where we see an issue. To me is a workable solution, but I'm not the expert.
Yeah, I I mean, I I'd be concerned, there'd be some liability with that too. If we, if we put a stop sign up where we don't have any support. For doing that, then, and then something does happen, I mean, I think there would be some liability on the city's part there.
Good. I'd like to also just challenge assumptions, MUTC, the word warrants, et cetera, so that. There's gotta be exceptions and we can go through legal or find some consultation to state that. Um, okay, the general gu- general guidelines in this big book that was produced by some faraway organization says X Y Z. But yet at the local level, based on these characteristics, the municipality decided to move forward with it, with taking action and doing something.
This is gonna be a great topic for the retreat. Um, because we owe it to the applicant to get back to that. We can um, proceed, we'll figure out how to proceed with all this once you get a sense of the timing.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, Sharon, back to number twelve. I appreciate everyone's patience. And also, I don't think your microphone's on.
Okay, we're gonna read this ordinance again. An ordinance to allow a drive-through restaurant at parcel number eighteen, three fifty, zero three, zero zero three. In consideration of a special land use permit case, SLUP twenty-five dash oh one. At forty-five seventy, Ashford Dunwoody Lane, and I will provide this to the council in the morning by email and I'll put it in the packet as well.
Sharon, will you repeat the address? Because I heard something different that was typed, just to make sure.
Forty-five seventy, Ashford Dunwoody Road.
Thank you all for your patience this evening. Sharon, council, I apologize for my uploading mishap in On Base Agenda. My nemesis. But uh, Raising Canes, this is the second read for their special land use permit for a drive-through, um, for the proposed drive-through restaurant. One other note, um, is today, uh, we did receive an email and I believe, um, council was also copied on this email. Uh, for a public comment from a resident, um, that was in opposition to this case, so I just wanted to make note of that. Um, and then again, based on feedback from the applicant at the last meeting, uh, we've updated this traffic study slide. Uh, during the process, the applicant submitted an updated traffic study that differed um, slightly from their initial uh, application. So for example, um, the net new trips is a hundred trips less than the initial study. So I just wanted to correct those numbers again at the behest of the applicant. Um, and if you have further questions regarding the traffic, the the applicant is here to address those. Other than that, um, the. Um, staff's recommendation of denial remains the the same as the previous meeting. Um, but if you do choose to uh, approve the. Case, we do have recommended conditions that are attached to that ordinance. Um, and again, staff and the applicant are here if you guys have any questions about this. And then just for reference, again, this is the proposed development and the associated site plan.
Thank you. All right, this is an action item. But are there any questions or comments? Jo- John, go ahead.
Thank you, Medeline. Um, looking at the page in front of us, the proposed development, the site plan, if I may. Tell me it uh, to the north, directly to the north, it abuts the Italian restaurant. And immediately to the, I guess that's the east is the hotel. And then below it is the McDonald's. The site plan shows two access uh, points to both the Italian restaurant and the hotel. And those are adjoining um, parcels. Do either, either one of those parcels have an objection to this slump?
Uh, my understanding is that the Limeridian Hotel, and they've been here to provide public comment, um, previously. Uh, they have significant concerns um, regarding the level of traffic that this use would route through their property. There is, you know, technically an interparcel. At access agreement between the parcels, but they did present that as an issue at a previous meeting.
Correct, that's my uh, memory as well. The way I'm looking at this is that those three parcels, the rest, the Italian restaurant. The proposal in front of us as well as the hotel are tied at the hip when it comes to cross-access. For their parcels. They, uh, one was a bank at one point, one was, you know, they are tied at the hip. They have to work together congruently in order to be successful. The applicant that we have in front of us today is putting in a, a drive-through at a higher use than one of their neighbors. Who has to be a partner with them is allowing or would prefer. They don't want that, as far as I'm concerned. It's it's a detriment to the hotel and uh, therefore I, based on my uh. What I am asked to approve or disapprove this measure, I am going to vote to disapprove this slump. Now, we've already approved the restaurant. Raising Canes can open tomorrow without the drive-through. But uh, based on um, the neighbor. Who has a, is forced, cannot change it. I asked if we could close those uh, openings. So that uh, the development can work by itself and not be tied to the Italian restaurant and not be tied to the hotel. I was told that's not allowable, that those parcels have to stay open in that realm. I am going to vote to deny um, based on the uh, adverse uh, actions of the adjoining properties. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I'm just gonna kind of pick up on the same theme that John was just talking about. Um, I think. The, what I'll add to that, because I agree with everything you said, um, is that what you can't see when you look at the site plan or the application. Is the actual driveway in through the Limeridian property. It's not a typical. is the actual driveway in through the Limeridian property. It's not a typical road. It is a one-way that goes into the entrance of the hotel and the adjoining guest parking that is all right at that driveway point. And that's why I was asking about the queuing last week, because if the queuing backs up, I mean, that, that is going to just create a logjam at that, that particular part. And, and because it's one-way and it's single lane, the impact to this hotel is significant, because if there's a slightest backup there, guests can't get to the parking lot, guests can't get to the front desk to check in. Guests can't even do a U-turn because the only way to turn around is to go through the circle uh, there at the entrance to the hotel. So I, I agree with John. I think the impact to the adjoining property um, is, is significant and too much to overlook in this case.
Madeline, this is Stacy. Do you happen to have the GIS, our city map up on that computer?
I can pull it up, yeah.
I just kind of wanted from, um, I actually love maps. Um, and so I kind of wanted to give everybody the visualization of kind of what we're talking about. So if you could have the cursor, pretend like you're a car.
Sorry, would you like the aerial imagery on?
Yes, please. There we go. Yep, go back down a little bit, because I went to kind of to John and Tom's point. Okay, perfect. Yep. Go back. Okay, so let's pretend your cursor is is, is a car and you're going north on Ashford Dunwoody Road. So go north and you decide you want to go to the restaurant Raising Canes. You have to make a U-turn right there, correct?
A U-turn or a left turn onto perimeter center terrace, and then you can use the interparcel access that goes behind the North Italia. And you can go behind the North Italia to the subject property.
Yep. So you can do U-turn or you can go through an adjacent property to then circle around the restaurant. And then you have two choices. If you want to continue going, really just one choice, then you would circle around, you go back out behind North Italia to go back up to the stoplight. Right? To then make a right, to then go continue going left. And I guess for me, that's asking a lot of adjoining property owners. And the difference with McDonald's to the south is that there's entry and exits solely on their property. Um, and so for me, I make a motion to deny the slump.
Uh, Councilman Harris has made a motion to deny the slump. Uh, second by Councilman Secunder. Um, I have some discussion, so, um, and then we can, we can, if anybody else has questions or discussion. So two weeks ago, we visited this. I may have given mistakenly the impression that this is about the specific restaurant. It is not. It is critically important to acknowledge that once we rezone the land in Georgia, the slump stays with it indefinitely. You may love whatever's being proposed, but things could change and it might become your least favorite restaurant. This is about a land use, a request for a land use change that isn't so compatible with its neighbors, that doesn't fit our vision for perimeter center. As I said last, uh, two weeks ago, we get one shot at Ashford Dunwoody Road in our lifetime. At least those of us that are my age. And we have rezoned this for a restaurant. It could open, uh, Raising Canes, unlike the other application that we heard earlier today, has restaurants without drive-throughs. And there are thousands of people, thousands, that live within walking, live or work within walking distance of this location. So, um, oh, I didn't even realize John had left. Um, and so it, it isn't about what the, who wants to put a restaurant there, and we have approved it to be a restaurant. It is about the rest of the plan. Um, and that is what I object to, and I have been very consistent about that for several, several years. All right. Um, so there is a motion on the floor by Councilman Harris, second by Joe Secunder, to deny the application. Um, any further questions or discussion? I call the question all in favor of denying this application. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passive.
I'm a nay.
Oh, sorry. You didn't vote very fast. All right, so it's a six to, uh, deny, uh, six to deny, one, one opposing, six to approve the motion, one opposing the motion. Catherine Longbacher voted against it. Thank you. All right, Mr. Plateau. System, everybody.
Saying it's downloading the presentation, so don't know how long this will take.
Up there it goes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this one is an, uh, uh, presentation for the award of our internal audit services, RFP, that we recently put out. Very brief slides. Uh, first, just a very high level difference between internal and external auditors. Again, very high level, internal auditors focus on efficiency, operational efficiency and internal controls. The report to management, in our case, the audit committee as well. The external auditors are here to, uh, uh, provide an opinion on the accuracy of the city's financial statements. So two different roles, definitely. Again, tonight, what we're looking at is the internal audit services. The, uh, current firm, Nichols Callan Associates, uh, had the contract that expires at the end of this year. Under this agreement, they were the, uh, sole person that responded to this RFP. So we are recommending approval to them. Uh, Audit Committee and staff has been very pleased, very happy with their performance. It'd be another five-year contract beginning twenty twenty-six and ending in twenty twenty, uh, twenty thirty. Listed the cost by year there. Uh, the current agreement is fifteen thousand. They've been paid each year from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five is fifteen thousand each year. So, um, was expecting a slight increase in cost. So, uh, this is not, um, uh, out of the norm or anything like that. We were expecting that. And we'll make sure to include this in Finance Department's budget each year. Um, and then lastly, just to give a, a brief overview of some of the audits that they have performed in the last couple of years. Again, they perform one audit a quarter for a total of four audits a year. Um, there's a consistent theme that you'll see each fourth quarter, uh, look at purchasing cards or gas, WEX QT cards, uh, just because of, there's, there's a lot of potential for fraud and things like that in RP cards. We want to make sure that there's another set of eyes looking at that. But there's also quite a variety of other audits that they have performed over the last three years. So just again, just giving a background of what they do, uh, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Is it unusual just to get one bid? Or one response?
We, um, we got inquiries from seven firms. One was in Georgia, the rest were out of the state. So, uh, we actually put out two addendums to this, answering a total of thirty-six questions that we got on this. Uh, this is conducive to having people local. It makes it much easier. A majority of the firms were out of state again. As far as Boise, Idaho, actually, we had somebody that was responding to it. So, um, uh, we were looking for somebody that can attend the quarterly audit committees and things of that nature, so.
Uh, John.
Uh, thank you. I saw that they are, uh, local, they're Peachtree Corners. Um, Richard, did you vet these? Did you interview? Did you do a in-depth conversation or was it all paper-driven?
Each audit?
No, 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 no. And selecting this, this company.
Um, so they're the existing ones. So they've been performing it for the last five years. So we are familiar with their work. And we're familiar with the auditor, uh, the partner on the engagement and everything, yes.
So we're not switching, it's just an update. I guess what I was looking to see, what could we do differently? I mean, they are the outside eyes, you're inside. Different perspective. I was thinking that it might be a change, but no, this is the same. Is there any new audit? Hopefully in the future conversations with them, what, if they're doing audits for fifty different municipalities across the US, what are they learning from their skillset? What are you taking away? How are they adding value to us that we couldn't get otherwise? Hopefully those conversations are happening. You don't need to go in depth, but I'm hoping that again, they are business experts auditing all around the US with people probably screwing up in new and interesting ways. So what can, what have they learned and what can we take away and hopefully, uh, glean from their experience? Hopefully that's going to happen. So thank you.
Absolutely, sure. Yes. And they, and, uh, we take a lot of guidance from the audit committee also, and those are, uh, industry professionals, so to speak, as well, that have unique experiences. And so between city management, the internal auditor and the audit committee, we do look at different ways, different perspectives on what needs, what makes sense to audit, timing of the audit, what, what are riskier areas, so to speak, and things of that nature, yes. So.
I've, I've mentioned this before, but like, for instance, auditing of IT systems and practices, this is, this is a financial audit here.
They, yes, it's more about internal controls and operational efficiency. If you look on there, uh, back in Q three of twenty twenty-three, they did do an IT general controls audit. So, uh, not, um, I can get you obviously the report if you need to see it, but so they do a general controls is, is IT their area, area of expertise? Maybe not, but they do, will look at other areas for that, yes.
Maybe this is an Eric question of looking at our IT systems, having an external auditor come in and look at those as well for security and all those things even related to the flock, all the other systems we're using up and down streams and stuff. So potentially we can entertain looking at that as well and do that. I would like that annually, but you know, I don't know how the best practices are. Thanks.
Consent. Are we okay with that? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, it's still you.
Yes. Let me see how long this is. Maybe if I close some of them.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I think.
Come up a little faster. Or maybe. So this is our, our annual adjustment to align budget and actuals for capital projects. Uh, and identify some projects that maybe, uh, went over their budget slightly, for example. Or maybe there's a couple of projects that we feel are going to come in under budget. So again, we're aligning budget to actuals to this exercise. I'll go through the slides and just kind of walk through, uh, uh, what's on this slide. So we're adjusting, we're proposing adjustments to the three funds here tonight. SPOS one and SPOS two, and then the general capital projects funds. So within SPOS one, all the, uh, adjustments are within public works. So, uh, starting left to right on the chart, you have the project number, the project name, and that total budget is the total budget all years for that project. And then the total actuals is what against, what has been spent or what is going charged against that project through October thirty-first. So, um, if it's a positive number in that remaining budget, that means that actuals came in under budget. If there's a negative number in that remaining budget column, then that means that actuals came in over budget. And so if you look on this, this here, uh, we've kind of highlighted right in the middle, the proposed budget adjustment. So we're taking, uh, of the remaining budget out of a couple of fun, uh, projects. Dunwoody Club sidewalks, West Side Connector, uh, Vermont Road, Van Halen to Womack. And then we're reallocating those to the projects that need it. For example, the Winter's Chapel multi-use path, that was seventeen thousand five hundred and eighty over budget. So we're allocating aligned budget to actuals there. And then there are a couple of projects that we're adding a small amount to, uh, sixty thousand to Mount Vernon Road and forty-seven thousand of Vermont Road, uh, Womack to Vermont from tennis. So that is, and then one more, the, uh, Womack, Womack sidewalk as well. So, uh, again, the net effect to the fund is zero. So we're not increasing the fund, we're not decreasing the fund, we're reallocating funding within each project. So that is SPOS one projects. Uh, for SPOS two, same layout. This time, uh, there are public works projects on there, and there's also a couple of public safety projects. Uh, for projects that we are allocating money to are Mount Vernon Road, Attila Mill, Mount Vernon Road corridor, and then Happy Hollow Road sidewalk, the first three on there. And then the bottom three are projects that we are, uh, um, have identified coming under budget or identified savings in that we are reallocating to those projects up top. Uh, for public safety, uh, there were three projects that, that actuals came in above budget, the computer replacements, AED replacements, and the video wall for the real-time crime center. So, uh, removing or, or reallocating funding from police equipment to those three to, again, actual is equal budget in that scenario. You'll notice again that the bottom line for SPOS two is that there's no change to the fund itself. It's reallocating between projects. And then the last fund, Fund Three Fifty, again, a very similar exercise where, uh, we're, we are, um, uh, taking money or, or we have, actuals came in under budget for two projects, Tilly Mill sidewalk and the Cotillion, uh, Drive Multi-Use Path design. And we're reallocating those funds to West Side Connector, Winter's Chapel Multi-Use Path and Village Crossing Project. Similar for public safety, um, police equipment, we're reallocating funds from there to vehicle replacement for them. Once again, net impact of the fund is zero. It's reallocating between the projects. And those are the proposed changes underneath, uh, as part of this agenda, I don't.
Okay, questions? Joe?
Hey, Richard, thank you for the great detail. I really appreciate your, your notes and your comments, A, B, C, D, F. It's great. I really appreciate that. Really good clarity there. Um, and I'm, I'm looking at that proposed budget adjustment, and that's very clear to me. So I really appreciate the way it's laid out and it does make sense to there. Um, I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned that this is annually? You're doing this on an annual basis?
We could do it more frequently, but yes, uh, we do it at the end of the year to align, uh, everything, uh, as we start a new year, so to speak, and for January, but yes.
And yet there are some things that go, the Winter Chapel path, that was like, done like long time ago. So I guess there's just, it's, when do you really close the books on that? I, all, here's what I, I just want to know from an operational perspective versus an accounting. You're doing the accounting. From an operational perspective, I just want to know if there's anything that, um, we're missing out on. If, if you have a funds, you're using it within public works or public safety. So are, are there anything, if we need some other, to make some adjustments during the middle of the year, and you're talking to your department directors, they know what's around, right?
Yes, correct. For all of these adjustments, worked with Michael Smith and Chief and Deputy Chief to, to, uh, make sure that these funds, we'll move any funds out until they tell me the funds are, the project is closed or anything like that. Yes, the project's complete or, or anything, yes.
And also they're working with you to say, well, here's the project, we would appreciate that extra funding going towards.
Correct, yes.
Right. So, yeah, that, that to me is operationally, uh, a, a great match, and I appreciate that. So I understand as an accounting. Uh, but I do appreciate it happening though, because you've, I've read the paper where addition, addition municipalities are like sitting on stuff for a long time. And, uh, let's make sure we're using that. But thank you so much.
Sorry, I have a question. So on the SPOS two, which is recent, right? We're in like year two or something?
Correct.
We already have gone over budget on several categories.
Not necessarily, and, uh, man, I don't know if Michael can hear that. Oh, he's back there. So the first.
No, just, I'm only concerned about public safety.
Public safety. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, uh, those were individual projects. Um, uh, that we established a budget, we used the, uh, video wall for the real-time crime center, established a budget. Um, and it just came in over the budget. And we are, we're using this opportunity to adjust that to, to make budget equal, actually, yes.
What are we sacrificing? Like, what are we not going to be able to purchase? I, I, you don't have to answer that right now. But I assume that we had budgeted out all our resources. Uh, or maybe not, maybe because it's SPOS, we didn't. But I sure would like a report on the impact of the over cost, over cost, I don't know what to say, overruns, because in this economy, what'd you say? Cost imbalance, thank you very much, of, uh, what we need to be concerned about that maybe we can't fund through SPOS two for the police department.
I will say as part of the amendment that was made with the twenty twenty-six budget, that addressed a lot of these police equipment needs.
Kind of remember that. So this is, actually could have come before the amendment. Kind of remember that. So this is, actually could have come before the amendment, didn't have to, but this is what we addressed with the amendment. Okay, perfect. So what do you need from us? Do we have to approve this at some point?
Yes, consent agenda would be perfect.
Is everybody okay with this on consent? Yes, okay, that will be on consent.
Thank you.
Wow. Okay.
Richard, I would, I would just like to echo Joe as well, like the, the way you presented, it's, it's very, it's very easy for a non-accountant person to, to read. I, I like, like with Joe, I really do appreciate that.
Thank you, sure.
Um. All right. Public comments? I don't have any cards. There's not much public. Okay, city manager comments? Counsel comments? We, we are well underway in our holiday headquarters efforts in Dunwoodie. Ice skating has opened at High Street. All our commercial properties are lit up beautifully, Ashford Lane, High Street, Park Place, parts of the mall. I don't know that I've seen all them all. Bon Mar certainly looks beautiful. As well as Dunwoodie Village and the snowflakes across the town look great. You can look up the schedule at Discover Dunwoodie. We have lots of really fun things happening. And please join in.
Can I, can I tag on to that? Tomorrow night is when the lights are lit up for the first time?
Yes. Tomorrow night, the lights at Brook Run. The event begins at four, I believe, and the lights come on at six. It's very exciting. So thank everyone for your support and enjoy the holidays, but we will see you in two weeks. All right, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Rob, second by John. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye. Thank you for coming.
Please. I have a flight in the morning. I'm going for two.